Good afternoon and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners Workshop. Today is Monday, May 5th, 2025, and the time is a little after three o'clock. I would like to ask you to please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Reginald Watts to lead us in the invocation, and Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, Lord, we thank you for who you are. And, Lord, we just ask for your presence in this place, God. Lord, we ask that you guide and lead us in decisions that we make for this community. It is in Jesus' name, your people have prayed, amen, amen, and amen.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners Workshop. Today is Monday, May 5th, 2025, and the time is a little after three o'clock. At last, I would like to ask you to please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Reginald Watts to lead us in the invocation, and Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, Lord, we thank you for who you are. And Lord, we just ask for your presence in this place, God. Lord, we ask that you guide and lead us in decisions that we make for this community. It is in Jesus' name, your people have prayed, amen, amen, and amen.
Do you want me to pledge the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. First, I'd like to ask Chief Code Enforcement Officer Luke Fletcher to share with us a brief update on the department's dashboard. Luke?
Yes, sir, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you guys and share a synopsis of the last year that I've been in law or in code enforcement. As you guys know, I took over April of 2024. Since that time, we've been able to build the department to a three-man department. Basically bringing the last guy on at the end of August, beginning of September. I had a PowerPoint. There we are. So the first slide, looking at the graphs, we had a total number of cases we opened in the last year. Of 640 cases. Not, that is not including most of the public nuisance properties that we'll look at in just a few minutes. Of those 640 cases, we have been able to close either through voluntary compliance or court, 507 cases. You can see from April to August of last year, on the first slide on the left, we had a drastic difference between the cases that we opened and closed. Primarily opening cases, I guess citizens were finding out we had code enforcement. September through November, you could see a flop in that where we closed, had much more drastic case of closing.
Is that just because of like the timing of when court was and stuff?
We really started getting involved in court in September timeframe. And also bringing on that third officer, we were able to work a lot, a lot more extra cases during that timeframe. And after the November timeframe, you can say it's kind of more evened out where we're staying more steady with what we're opening and closing. We currently have around 200 cases that we're either following up on or investigating the validity of the complaint. Our goal as a department is to reduce blight in Spalding County and provide a healthier and safer environment for our citizens and visitors, preferably through voluntary compliance. The next slide that you will see, this shows violations that we had to take to court. People who would not comply with our request or traffic violations, no through trucks. The total count at the time of this information was 389 violations total. The percentage of traffic to property, as you can see, is right at 50/50. We are doing our best to work both sides of these concerns and work all areas of the county. The last slide that I'm going to present today deals with our public nuisance abatement that we're working on. We have 127 properties identified in our system. We are receiving some effort from some of our local citizens we've been able to contact in getting these issues resolved. The biggest issue that we have is people who live out of town or have deceased. The goals that we have as a department as far as public nuisance properties are to coordinate with Dr. Ledbetter and Stephanie Wyndham to work these cases in the most economic manner possible and also reduce the number of cases that we have on the books each year. Do y'all have any questions for me?
I have a question. So Dundee Mill, where it used to be Dundee Mill Road?
Railroad at Bleachery?
Bleachery, yeah. I'm getting all kind of complaints about that. And even with the city commissioner McCord had called me about that as well. I think I mentioned that. So what, what's going on?
That, that actual corner is two separate parcels. We have mailed notice to, which is one of the step, one of the first step in resolving the public, public nuisance issue. So we have mailed notice to both parcel owners. I have not received any information from either one. They both live out of town, so making contact with them, you know, in person is out of the question.
It's terrible. It's terrible.
We have put up cameras on the location trying to monitor for illegal dumping. We had no success with that. We placed cameras in two separate locations around that parcel, trying to catch some of the people dumping. Just, we cannot go on the parcel itself.
Nobody dumped anything while you had the camera up? Because I mean, every day that I come, if you're talking about the same place I'm talking about.
Yeah, right there Dundee, Dundee Mill.
New tires, new furniture.
It's on a regular basis. Yes, ma'am. One of the things that, that code enforcement and community development and Ms. Wyndham and I have been discussing is opportunities to move forward with that property. Either through addressing the issues through liens, where we cleaned it up and leaned the property. We've even gone as far as having conversations about foreclosure on the property because that is a significant issue for us in that area that we need to address immediately.
But it's, it's not just that place.
Agreed.
So, so that, that's the problem for me. Not that, that I want us to have something that will expedite us making somebody do something outside of the procedures, but it takes way too long. And if it takes way too long and part of that requirement, for, for us, there is no, okay, at four and a half weeks, you haven't come back to us, or in six weeks, you haven't mailed a letter back. So now, we clean the property up and we put a lien on your property. We're not, we don't have that. And so consequently, what we do have takes forever and forever. I'd rather us incur the cost and put cameras up or do whatever we need to do like they did on North Nice Street, than to have people come into the corridor of our city and all they see on one side of the railroad tracks, which now that's the whole thing, the other side of the railroad tracks. It's junk houses and people got furniture and everything. And it's, it's as if, yeah, coming in on Experiment Street looks really nice, but if you look over to the side, or if you have to go over to the other side, you see a whole different city of Griffin and a whole different Spalding County. So that's my comment. My question is, why can't we do something?
In a lot of ways, taking a long time and, and the process that you have to go through to actually force someone to, to do anything with their own property or even condemning their own property is, is not necessarily a bad thing because you are depriving someone of their property right. So that even though the process is long and arduous in a lot of ways, it's necessary because there are many steps that you have to go through. And these properties, and especially the one that you're talking about, is one that, that actually, had our land bank been used appropriately over the years, that would have been an absolute appropriate property for the land bank to have, have purchased at a tax sale and, and then foreclosed the right of redemption. And we have all of those same options, but they do take a long time. I don't know if in this particular property that you're discussing, if the property taxes are delinquent. If they are, then it's something that we could ask Ms. Hollum's office to go ahead and move forward with a tax sale, but they're not, they're not delinquent.
Last time I checked, they were not.
So, so I, I, I heard everything that you said, and I understand the process, and I've seen us go through the process. My concern is, it, what is happening from the notification to process end. And what I want to know is, why can't we do something on the cleanup side? If you say we have the tool where we can put a lien onto the property because we've notified, and I don't know if that means we've notified you once, twice, we've sent it by certified mail, we've sent it to the place you pay your taxes. I don't know what that is, but if we've done that, then we should have the right to go in and clean that up and charge that property owner for that.
You can lien it, and, and once you do, you can foreclose on that lien. And, but the foreclosure process doesn't necessarily mean that it doesn't start all over again, because what could happen is they could purchase, the same people could purchase it.
Right, and, and I get it.
If you foreclose on it.
I don't think the goal for us is to foreclose. But if the property is going to stand fallow and, and empty and nobody's doing anything with it for the next 20 years, we have a right for it not to be a dump. I mean, and I'm, when I'm saying we, I'm saying, you know, everyone, all of us included. So I would just like for us to, you know, have some definitive criteria for code enforcement to be, be able to work with. You know, we kind of went down the road of NREM for some years, and then we didn't have good judge help when we were doing that.
Your, your NREM solution was not, it wasn't a county solution. The, the ordinance was based on the city of Atlanta, which has a municipal court. And it was not appropriate for you because it actually made this Board of Commissioners the, the judge. And the judge with no real due process, it, it, it didn't work. And so the decision was made whether or not we should pursue these in magistrate court or in state court. That was, we had a discussion, I remember several years ago with Judge Thacker about if he would, this was before schools on speed cameras became a thing. If he would be willing to set aside a court day for, for us for, to, to actually go through the process in the correct way as opposed to a way that we could never. I mean, we were filing Liz Pendants, and a Liz Pendants is a notice of a lawsuit, and we didn't have a lawsuit filed. So it, and, and the Liz Pendants was sort of supposed to be like the lien against the property. Liz Pendants is not a lien against the property. So when I first started looking at this, which was many years ago with Chad, it, it was a mess. And then, you know, COVID happened, other things happened. It didn't become a priority, but.
But I understand that that was the only option that was given to us at that time. So while it may not have worked, that just, everything stopped. And so the same problem, so getting, I, I understand the process, and I'm not trying to make us go outside of due process, but we should not have our hands tied. We should be doing something. We should not be in a position where as a county, we have to perpetuate other people.
And, and at that time, there was also a, a perception that the magistrate court was not the way to go because they were being soft on that type of thing and were just allowing property owners more and more and more time. I don't know that that is the case anymore or that it would be the case at this point.
She is offering more time to most, but it is limited, a month and a half, two months.
And I, instead of, you know, six months, eight months, and with, I mean, that's, that's a much better outcome than what we were getting several years ago in the magistrate court, which is why we look to the state court as a potential solution to the problem. I do think now that the magistrate court, especially with some of the pictures that you have, some, that photographic evidence makes a, a big impression on our magistrate judges because they live here too, and they don't want to see these places become dumping grounds.
So in answer to my comment, or in response to my comment, what can we do? While we're waiting for the process to play itself?
Well, I, I think we continue to cite and, and take them through the process in, in the magistrate court. And if they don't comply, then that's the time when we, we would start cleaning it up ourselves and, and leaning the property, which is, I mean, it's not the best alternative for us either, but it, it's the only way.
Back to your point, we also are placing cameras out and being active to find those who are actually dumping. We, we have, how many cameras?
I have three cameras currently out.
So pro act code enforcement.
There's not all at that one. There's only one currently up in that area.
So, and where are the other two?
One is on 155 at just before Heron Bay, the dumping lot across from the liquor store. And the other one is at a location off of Vaughn, uh, Vaughn Road.
So that, the house, the pink house, I don't know the address, on Railroad Street, where the, the, the people who actually own it or who, people who have possession of it aren't the owners, but the owners are dead, and these people are in jail. That property, that stuff sat out in front of that property for four months. And the mountain has gone down, but because people have carried off stuff, the rest of it is just all over the yard, blowing into the street. And it's been five months. And no, there's not anybody for you to be in touch with. So where does that leave us?
Unfortunately, in a very difficult position because it's, at that point, it is up to us to find out who, who does have to be notified because there, and air property is, is often the worst because there are, there can be children spread out all over the country, many of whom are deceased as well. So then it goes down to their children. And I mean, we run into this with the land bank when we're trying to clear title to land bank, land bank properties all the time. It's basically, you have to become a detective and figure out who, who the people are that are entitled to notice because there's rarely probate filed, unfortunately.
Is there no way to just publish?
Sometimes you ha, you can, but you actually, you have to prove that you've exhausted every other effort.
So we, like, like over on Railroad Street, we don't, we can't do anything to that, but we don't have an ordinance, and maybe Steve, I think you said it was a state ordinance. Like if, if a landlord knows that they're going to put somebody out, they, I, I'm assuming they've given them notice or whatever, but they show up over there and they dump everything on the right of way. Not, not in their yard, on the right of way, which is our yard. And then it sits there, and it falls in the road. So why can't, if a landlord is putting somebody out, they'd be required to put that, dump that stuff into a roll-off? I mean, are we the, the body who can say that in terms of rental properties or whatever? Because we have to, we have to have some power somewhere.
Possibly, and, and I will look into that, but there are state laws that require, set out, that, that govern set-outs after an eviction. And, and so the landlords have to leave that property basically on the side of the road for a period of time to allow the, the tenant to retrieve its, their property.
So, and, and I'm not mad about that, but can't they retrieve it from out of the roll-off? Instead of it being blown all over every time we have a storm? Or every time somebody decides to go through the junk to see if there's something in there that they want? That's my concern, is that it leaves us holding a bag. We haven't collected any rent from anything from that property. We've not collected any utilities. And now we have the expense of cleaning up all the debris that gets blown around because the landlord decided that they wanted to.
Well, at what point, because it's always their property, we just have to put it on the curb. At what point have they abandoned that property or can be cited for littering for not picking up their property?
I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but there is a period of time that the landlord could come back and retrieve it.
Okay, this is.
It's not more than a few days.
But after that, would you decide for littering? Have you blocked your stuff here?
Yes.
Because we, we, we send code enforcement out, and they don't have teeth to really enforce the stuff that is the problem. And so, you know, we, we can talk about what all the law says and what the state says, but within that, we have a responsibility to the rest of the citizenry to, to make sure that people are not abusing cleanliness and, and whatever. So, so I, I don't want this conversation to just die because we're, we're rolling from, away from this. The other thing that I had a concern about was that I found it interesting that in Luke's PowerPoint, they're focusing, they're doing really good on no-through trucks, but I, I, I don't, I don't know who made the decision that it was important enough that 50% of their time should be spent on that. Because when I ride by through my district, which is up on the north side and the south side, and I see like four or five cars parked in somebody's yard and they're half-covered, there's no tires on it, I have to say to myself, do we not have a, a junk car ordinance? You know, not, not you got a junk car in the backyard, you got junk cars in the front yard. And I want to see, so I don't know if we need to, to say that, okay, maybe y'all are doing good on that. I don't know if y'all need another code enforcement person, but there needs to be some more towards the, the other end. I, I, I think they've done really good in a year's time, but I think the focus needs to
Shift.
Shift to stuff that people have just taken for granted because we didn't have code enforcement for two years. I mean, and that's piling up trash and furniture all on the front porch where EMS can't get in and all the stuff that they're, that, that they're doing. So I would love for you and code enforcement to, to go back and look at that and come back to us with, with, with a new game plan for, for how you're going to dedicate um, looking at other areas that we need to, to work with. I think that's all I wanted to add. Um, looking at other areas that we need to, to work with. Um, I think that's all I wanted to ask. Thank you for your presentation, Luke, and thank you for everything that you've been doing.
James, thank you.
I, I brought up several times the idea of those cameras, um, because with those cameras, you, you can take that and say, hey, this is. The tag, this is the person who dumped that, um, and we can really go after them to incentivize. But I brought the idea for, uh, to create a, a bounty system. Anyone can put out those cameras. And if they bring us, hey, here's the before, here's the after, this is the guy dumping, here's the cameras, like, you can, you can go check, let me cite this person. And then they get half of the fine money that's brought in. This will incentivize cameras to go up. And I, I mean, I know it's in front of my mom's house. They, they're going back to Waterford and it's somehow exactly the right timing to finish their burger. And right in front of her house, they just throw all their crap out. And, you know, since my dad died a few years ago, it's my widowed mom. Has to get out there on the side of the road where everybody's speeding and pick up this trash. And we know where the, and they're turning right into Waterford, you know, so, uh, she could put up a camera and that, that's just one personal, uh, uh. You know, way that it could be used, but it could be, look on Sapporo and all of the other roads that are just.
Trashed.
It's, it's a dump and.
It's a good idea. It's something. We, we, we must do something more than what we're doing.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, there, if we can put a lien on this place and then. While, while they still have the ability to come and pay it off and whatever as we're foreclosing, that, and we're going out to have to put work in to clean up their property. Can we not charge them for that work that we're having to do on their property?
That's where the lien comes in. We, we're, we're charging them for the work and when they don't pay it, then we can file a lien.
Okay.
So that, whatever work that we do goes onto their tax bill or whenever they try to sell the house, they can't sell it because they.
Right, it has to be paid before the.
What, as soon as we could get out and start cleaning up out there? Like, can we, can we do that like now or?
I go out and do some work. I charge three thousand dollars.
They're saying is that because it's private property as a government, we don't have the right to go on to their property. We have to have done X, Y, and Z. We've tried to do this, we tried to do that, that didn't work till now, we're gonna go on here and clean it up.
Right, and you don't want, you don't want it to, um, if you don't jump through those hoops, like if you went out there tomorrow and did that without jumping through these hoops. That's, that's a gratuity.
That's correct.
And, and we can't do that because not, it's unconstitutional, but it's also, um. Yeah, they just, we're, we're trespassing for, for one thing and for another thing. We're giving somebody something of value that we can't give to everyone.
So, so what I, what I was thinking is that, you know, we're saying, here's the drop dead date, we sent code enforcement out, this is where they did it. They cited the person. Thirty days later, we went back, it's not fixed, you're cited again, or we sent a letter out or whatever else. And thirty days later, nothing. Then, then, then what's the three or four avenues we can go to from that? But of course, all that paperwork is Stephanie saying, has to have been done. The letters have to have been written. You have to show that you made every effort before we can do anything. I'd just much rather that to be between ninety days and a hundred and eighty days. Instead of three hundred and sixty days.
We agree with you wholeheartedly. One of the things that the ordinance, the current ordinance actually affords us the opportunity to do is actually cite daily. So we could write a citation for that property every single day.
I- is there a mechanic to not have to make it a separate citation, but an ongoing single citation?
No, it's, um, you, you have to try that. It has to be a summons for court, so it's got to be a separate document.
So if they get a, a citation every day, they gotta go to court for a different case or is this all one kind of?
It would be a separate case for every citation. They could get thirty tickets every single month.
Well, if, if, if that's a, if that's an issue, if, if we're saying that after we've tried to reach you for five or six weeks. Or after we've tried to reach you for thirty days, then we need to put it in writing that we're gonna start citing you every day. You will get an automatic citation every day.
I agree.
But, but I just feel like if there is not a game plan for moving forward, we can't share with our neighbors. That I know it looks bad, but this is what can happen at, at, at some point. So that, that's just kinda what I just wanna see, a little bit more structure to help us help you guys. And then we can start driving in on the specifics.
Yeah, because the answer is, we know we're working on it. And they go, well, what are you doing? Well, you know, we've got, the guys, we're working on, you know, like if we could have, this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I, I did, this brings to mind something that, um, was on your radar at one time. And, and maybe now that the land bank has, um, a, a manager could be on your radar again. And that would be to identify properties that are owned by the land bank that you would like to see, um, cleared. Because if, if there are those that, um, we need to move to the top of the list for land bank. Then to, to get, to go ahead and get started on title clearing for, for those properties that you might see as strategic.
You know, we, we had talked about that, um, substandard housing funding. That was happening out of, uh, planning and development. I just, you know, it was, I guess maybe ten or twelve years ago when we did a community housing study. The city is doing, in the process of doing another one. So between Hurricane Helene and what are that other girl named that came? That was a tornado, um, and, and stuff just falling down in general. A lot of the stock that we had claimed as substandard has been gone. But it's a bunch of houses that was just on the brink, twelve years later, they're the raggedy houses. And I think it would help a lot if, not just for, uh, planning, I mean, planning and development, but for them to know that there's a new list. There's a list that we're working on, um, that has been created since then. There were some houses that may have been damaged and people just didn't wanna go back. Well, that's a house that needs to go on the list. So, and on, uh, High Falls Road going down to where you're talking, where that data center is asking, on one side of the street, there's just about. Two or three houses right there together that if you blow on them, they're gonna fall in. But they're not on our substandard housing list. So, so it would be nice if we looked into what it would, and I don't know that the GIS or whatever it is that we got could do that. But I think we need to have an updated list, cause a ten-year-old list doesn't really reflect what we're trying to work with. And we don't have any numbers to say that this year, we have forty-five substandard housings and, and we just demolished ten. Or we turn ten back over to somebody else or, so yeah, okay, I'm done.
Okay, we, you got all that stuff we need to do. Uh, Luke.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Thank you.
I think you're, you're, what you're done in a year and where you're going is important and you're doing a great job. We appreciate it. We know you're out there struggling and trying to figure out what's going on, but, uh, this is important and we appreciate what you're doing every day for us. Our community is looking better because of you. Now, we wanna see a big jump unfortunately, and you're taking the steps one at a time. Go slow to, go fast, but, um, we got it. So thank you.
Can I, can I have one more?
Yes.
Sorry, he's right, but, um, the, uh, City of Atlanta, I believe, has a hundred and fifty dollar per year. Per bedroom for rentals, like a fee that goes a hundred percent towards code enforcement. And then a code enforcement person goes and has to see every single bedroom. Now, we're not there yet. We gotta take care of some crazy stuff before we get there. But there's a bu, some of these, like the pictures we just saw, those are obvious, wow, this is not okay. But there's houses in Spalding County that have dirt floors that look okay, I'll say okay, not nice, but okay from the street. You can't drive by and go, that house has got a dirt floor. So, uh, I think obviously we've gotta deal with, you know, what's on front of us and on fire, as I like to say. But then that, we've got a lot more to do. This is just sort of phase one. So I think the, the way to be able to expand code enforcement and fund it is that bedroom fee. Which lets us go in and go, holy crap, this is a predatory situation. Somebody, this person's being taken advantage of by their landlord. Um, and, and sometimes they then sublease and take advantage of somebody else. I have a personal example of that. So, uh, we can really make a difference in some people's lives. I mean, there might be a homeless person living in those buildings, but there's not like a renter living in those buildings that we just saw. But there's people that are renting stuff, paying more than my mortgage and there's, you know, there's no power and there's no, you know, like, so.
And if we know about those things, if they come to us, that's the type of thing that in the past, we have referred to the housing authority. Because they can assist with, with getting those folks into a better situation. And getting them out of the current situation without them having to end up paying these exorbitant fees.
Well, a, a hundred percent, that, that's the housing, the housing authority's job is to focus on how do we rehouse this person. Our job is to punish that predator who put them in that situation. So that's where, you see what I'm saying, like, we need to do that, that part of it. Now again, it's not on fire quite yet. There's, you know, junk yards on the sides of the road right now we gotta deal with. But like, uh, you know, I, I think phase two is.
Yep.
Going in and getting rid of some of those shenanigans that are happening.
Part of the issue with the housing authority is that if I, if I live someplace and it only costs me five hundred dollars a month. And I, and I rent that place, okay, if I go and make a complaint to the housing authority, first of all, I'm not gonna go because that means you're gonna put me out. But if you do go to the housing authority, it is supposed to provide you, the housing council will provide you with protection from being turned out. Because you complained. But if the housing authority deems that a house is not livable, not inhabitable. You've still got nowhere to stay. So that is the other part of the problem. The, the, the education piece and the fact that we don't have available housing for people to move into. So I'm saying all that to say this, James, if there were a mechanism where whenever someone leased a home to someone. And I don't know if they had to pay for utilities or whatever, we were able to be on the front side of that knowing. Prior to them entering, then that would be an opportunity for us at least to make sure that there's not water leaking under the sink. Or that the toilet's not running all day, or there's screens on the window.
We do it with certificates of occupancy.
Some municipalities who have a rental registry and, um, we have looked at that in the past as a.
Yeah, Atlanta's got one and they charge for a year.
We actually have a draft one ready to come forward, so.
Uh, because I think that at some point.
There's no reason to pass it if we can't enforce it, but like.
But, but you can better educate people because I mean, I know that is why people don't go to the housing council. Because they already had a hard time finding that place and they just wanted to not be outdoors. So, you know, without us having available housing for them to move into and out of that situation, it creates a problem. So unless we're able to help them on the front side.
Yep.
To know that basically when you moved in your house, the water will run out of the tub.
Yep.
Then I think that's as much as we can do.
And there are so many absentee landlords. I mean, it's, it, it is insane how many people that don't live anywhere near. Griffin, Georgia, own rental property in Griffin, Georgia. And they may have one person that handles all of their rental property all over the state of Georgia and good luck if you've got a problem. They're not gonna come to your house.
So there's something coming to us that will help us to identify this or to explore this even more. I mean, I don't know about what a fee, fee structure would be for something like that, but if it just gives us more power. To make sure that, uh, substandard housing is not being leased out on a regular basis.
And there is a new Safe at Home Act that was signed last year. So as a new tenant, they can invite me into the property for an assessment if they feel there are, are some issues. And we will gladly go out and do that. It's just, I don't think the word's gotten out.
And we also need to make them feel.
Safe.
Uh, safe to do that and not like, well, if they find something, they're gonna kick me out of the house, like Gwen said, you know.
Back in the car again.
Yeah, if we put them, if we connect that with, um, the housing authority so that if that has to happen, we've got somewhere, you know what I mean?
The housing authority's on a six-month waiting list right now.
And, and that is something that y'all might wanna consider, holding a couple of town halls about. And, and you might involve some other organizations. I mean, definitely the housing council and the housing authority. But I, you know, maybe even members of the board of realtors, there are some of them that manage rental property. And, and just to, to get the word out because I, you're right, there are a lot of tenants out there. Who are living in terrible situations and paying exorbitant amounts of money and they think they don't have a way out.
Right, the car is the way out, you know, if they can move back into the car or live with dirt floors, we gotta do, okay.
Or no electricity. I mean, you know, you hear about it with the, the school system all the time. Kids go home and in the wintertime, they, they can't study and do homework because they don't have any life.
Okay, uh, you're doing, keep going. Just keep going. Look, don't get frustrated because we, we've already seen where you've started. We're already moving here and you're saying, hey, I'm really happy here. We're always gonna be one step ahead, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Luke. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Uh, next on the agenda, I'd like to ask TJ Mberger to step forward to share with us the request to declare three pieces of equipment. As surplus. TJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The request is to surplus three pieces of parks equipment. And then funds from their sale to be utilized for additional equipment for parks and public works. Next slide, please. These are the three pieces of equipment, uh, one ZTR, one grandstand and one tractor. Uh, they are all non-operable and are unable to get parts. Next slide, please. This is a, to give you an update, this is currently the equipment we have listed up for surplus. Uh, they're on numerous auction sites. The ones that are in blue are ones that have auctions that have ended. And on just those four pieces of equipment, we've collected nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Oh, good. All right, any questions for him?
I, you, you know, I got a question. Not a question, I got a comment. I, I, I feel like, I know we've done this before. But I feel like we're not being fair to the other departments. Because if the other department save money or have money that they do something with, we don't give them money back. We don't put that money back in their budget. That money goes back to the general fund. When we get stuff from animal control, when they, people pay for adoption or they pay for da-da-da-da-da. That money does not go back into the spay neuter fund or the whatever. It goes back into the general fund. So I know that we've done this before, but I'm just saying, I don't think that it's fair to the other department heads. Because when they either set, surplus something or whatever, they don't get that money back.
If, if they are surplusing, uh, capital items such as vehicles, uh, or capital equipment. Uh, it is the intent to bring back to you the, uh, request to put that money back into their budget. For the purchase of vehicles or equipment.
But, but this equipment that they are replacing has been replaced by other equipment already, okay? So, so that's why I'm not understanding why all of the money that is collected at the aquatic center for the pool. Is not going back into the aquatic center budget instead of going into the general fund. Or all the memberships from the senior center don't go back into the budget for the senior center. So, so why are we making an exception in this department, but we're not allowing other departments to be up there? I mean, I don't know how much money this is, but I'm saying right is right. Why are we doing it for one group of people and not doing it for, for the others?
We could put it all back in the general fund. The only difference is, we just take it out of the general fund to purchase capital items.
But if it hadn't been for the fact that this is surplus and we already have purchased equipment to cover it. Then I just feel like it just, to, to be fair to everyone, it should go back, if everybody's money goes back into the general fund, that money. Same thing with Luke. You're writing tickets, that money ain't going to him, get him, it should be going to get him an extra code enforcement officer. Cause that's how we paid for code enforcement officers before. And I think that if they've had a hundred and something cases. They probably made enough money to pay for two more code enforcement people. So we just need to have a better internal policy about what that is. And, 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 and before we just kinda start leaping and going. And I'm, I mean, I might be speaking out of class, I don't know what other department heads are saying, but I'm just saying in terms of when I saw this, I thought, are we doing this for anybody else?
I, I like the idea of, cause that incentivizes the department heads to do it. I like the idea of keeping the money in their departments. Of course, some departments might not.
Have that opportunity.
Have the same opportunity, but, uh, yeah, we want to incentivize where we can.
Aren't getting that same opportunity. So if we're not gonna do it for everyone, it's incom.
All right, we'll have Steve come back and talk to us about it and see what it affects, it has on different places. All right, thank you. Uh, item three on the agenda is no longer required. It is my understanding that Chief Byrd has negotiated a discount with the vendor. Which allows the budgeted purchase to be made by our county manager and which per, and which purchase is no longer required. By the Board of Commissioners. Great job to Chief Byrd for looking out for the bottom line and working to receive a discounted price. For this purchase. Well done, Chief.
What point of order, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So does this mean that in the session tonight, we amend the agenda to take that item off?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Uh, I'd like to ask TJ to come back to the podium. Uh, I'd like to ask TJ to come back to the podium to share with us the staff recommendation to move forward. With the INODIC grant for Volunteer Park and Ambucks Park, TJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, this is, I would like to add a note here that we continuously have been working. With our grants manager, Mr. Larry Wallace, and we're doing under, everything under his supervision. Uh, this will be to accept the bids from Piedmont Paving, who is the current lowest bid of the last set of bids. That we accepted for the neighborhood grants. Uh, this is being done at this time because we had ninety days to accept a bid. That will end today. Um, you're not approving a contract this evening. But we are asking you to approve to accept the lowest bid so that we can continue negotiations. Uh, to go ahead and finalize a contract to bring to you at a later date.
So we're not accepting a specific bid, we're accepting the lowest bid and you guys are gonna.
Correct. We, uh, as you'll see here shortly, the bids were incredibly high. So we've been already negotiating for a couple of months to try to get it below the actual grant amount. Uh, if you remember correctly, we received around nine million dollars. And we are needing to keep the scope of the project as close as possible so that we can maintain the grant funds.
So the, the entirety of the loans, the grants initially was eighteen million dollars?
It was like nine.
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 So five million for each project?
Thereabout. It was, uh, it was a rough split between the two, yes, ma'am.
So nine million dollars, but what we're actually going to get is what?
Nine million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't have.
That's not correct then, because the original grant that we put in for came back that one grant, we got ten million dollars and one grant, we got something else.
No, the, the total was always nine million. Uh, the bids came back at eighteen. The grant was only, uh, for nine million.
So, so what I, what I hear you say, the original grant was for nine millions and that was, that was based on what we submitted to them. The actual amount that they are going to give us is how much?
Nine million.
No, I thought you said they cut the money.
No.
I was told that the amount of money that we were going to be funded was cut, no? Okay, so the price of the projects were twice as much as the money that we were being allocated.
That's correct. When we bid the project, we didn't bid it once. How many times? Three?
That'd be, next slide, it'd be two.
So, so I'm asking all that because in looking at this, I don't really know what this is for. And I'm gonna tell you why I say that. I don't know if this is, this bid for Piedmont Paving to do, I guess, all, all of the paving in both parks.
No, it's not for paving. That's just the name of the company.
Okay, so understand when I went through this whole list of stuff, I don't know what is supposed to be in this park. And so if we're going to send out a bid to someone and we don't really know what the work is that they're gonna do. Because clearly half of the work that we were supposed to get done, we're not gonna be able to get done. So if we had nine million dollars worth of work and we're only gonna be able to spend four million dollars. Then how do we know what it is? It's just actually gonna be on the ground because this page here with all these numbers on it is based on the original. Whatever we sent in. The, this pa, all of these pages with prices and whoever. So I know I'm probably not being very clear about what it is. I'm trying to say, I'm, I know I'm going around the circle, so let me, let me go back. I don't know what this is going to get us, even if we're asking for it in a bid. Is this gonna get us three thousand linear feet of sidewalk? Is this gonna get us four pavilions? What they're bidding for? I don't like us making an agreement. We can say low bid all day, but how do we know that that's gonna be two pavilions and a water fountain? Or it's gonna be, and, and what is the important thing about that? If we don't, I tried to talk to you about this this weekend, but, but I didn't get a check last weekend, so I, I didn't get a check. The whole purpose of the grant is to provide a place for families to be able to gather if there are times like when we had COVID. Or when we had whatever and there was no place for people to gather on the inside. So for me, does that mean passive park? Does that mean only you won't walk in areas? Does that mean if this is all about the baseball fields, will we, will we concentrate on, I think it was three fields, maybe we can't afford three fields, maybe it's two. I need to know that. I don't know that anybody else cares. Because it's in my district and I wanna know what it is that you're putting there. I know the other park isn't. But it's very important to me that we have some more specifics because I don't, I don't, I don't see this. I, I wanna see that. This low bid will give us da, 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 da. Because based on the paper that is submitted in this agenda, that's these pages is not that.
I think we can do that.
Now, the other thing is that.
Would you let him walk through the rest of the presentation?
I wanna know why we're at ninety days and we just now getting this to make us, I, I don't like being have to make decisions. Because we hit the last day on something. I've not liked it for twenty years and I'm not liking it today. So, so that's, that's the other concern I have. Now, now he can make his presentation.
Go ahead, TJ.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, I'll, just a brief history before I get into this slide. When the, the bids, when the actual grants came out, yes, they were, uh, COVID money. We were actually required to hire a firm to actually do the numbers. The numbers did not come from Spalding County. They came from a firm who spent several months doing the engineering and we submitted the original amount of nine point two million came from that firm. Uh, that we hired to do those initial engineering drawings. So we took that and then we received the grant money at nine point two in twenty twenty-three. And then we spent most of twenty twenty-four, uh, designing and, uh, putting together the construction plans. For the original items in the grant so that we could put that out to bid. We put the first bid out in late fall of twenty twenty-four and we only received one bidder. That bidder was McElroy and that was for twenty million dollars. Then we rebid it the same bid. And that's when we received four bids and there's, that lowest was Piedmont at eighteen million dollars. Um, then this is what we're looking at now is we've taken that eighteen million. We've spent the last couple of months trying to negotiate that lower bid down to items. That would fit within the scope of the grant. If we don't fit within the scope of the grant, we will lose the grant money. So we have to get the essence of what we were looking for in the original bids. So that we can obtain this money. We've been working directly with Larry Wallace. He's been directly working with the state going back and forth so that we could get to a point that we think we can have a plan. Uh, that's negotiated enough to go ahead and secure the funds. Next, next slide. So these were the original bids that were received on these four. We did have a fifth bidder, but they didn't show up in time. They were a couple of minutes late, so that's why you see zeros there. Next slide. So this is what we anticipate. We're getting close. We're still missing one of the lighting numbers. This is what we anticipate that the nine point two million could afford. All of this is directly out of the bids that we received and the original scope of the grant. Uh, some highlights here is the Ambucks Park baseball improvements. Uh, new concession stand with restrooms, new well and irrigation for playing fields. And then a new roof and new exterior shell to improve the interior of the gym. Um, then there's multiple other items here. Yes, this is not all of the items that we anticipated in the grant. However, this is what we feel, what Larry feels would be approved by the state to keep the feel of the grant. Uh, softball improvements over at Volunteer. The real big items here is new concession and restrooms. And then a well and irrigation for the playing fields. As you know, at Volunteer, our biggest problem over there, especially in softball, is restrooms. We have two, what we call holes that support each the men and the ladies for the entire park facility. Uh, then we look at Volunteer football. Uh, this has always been a need for decades. Is that one of those football fields is only eighty yards. Needs to be expanded to a hundred yards. And once again, we need concession and restroom facilities. So there's a lot of other items here. The items that I mentioned are the major items that would be the essence of the grant. I know we're not, we don't have the final negotiations yet, so we're not asking for a contract to be approved. But if like we don't get this accepted, then we're gonna have to rebid. In this situation, one, I don't know we're gonna be able to rebid to hit the essence of the grant. And then anything we rebid from this point on, I'm gonna have to do new construction drawings. So we have to spend this money and have it completed by fall of twenty twenty-six. Uh, if I go to new construction drawings, if I could get the state to approve that. That'll be another six to eight months before I could go to another bid process.
Why do you need to get new construction drawings? You have, you had them to go and do the whole thing based on everything that we, we have, right?
Right. These are based on negotiating from the existing drawings. Um, if we now go with these. We've taken a lot of stuff out of those. I really wouldn't have a product to go to the rebid. I'd have to have a new product. And I don't even know that the state would approve that because we gotta keep within the scope of the original, uh, grant.
Okay, so I understand the scope of the original grant. And the scope of the original grant is for the entire community, not for the baseball community. Now, this is mostly about the baseball community. It's about the, the fields. What about shade structures for people who come out there? What about new bleachers? What about walking areas? Those are the things that the general public, if you look at the spirit of what this INDIOC grant is for. It is for the community to have a place to come. Everybody in the community don't play baseball. So what I would expect to see is that if we have to cut things out, it would be things that would be inclusive. Of the neighborhood that would stay in, not exclusive of certain groups of people. So that is a problem that I have with that. The other thing that I have with looking at both of these is that we have field. You, you got new sod or, or whatever, and then you've got, um, irrigation. We put irrigation up at Wyoming Taya Soccer Park and never used it because we couldn't afford water. So my point is, why would we spend that money to do that down at Ambucks or even over at Volunteer? When we already know we're not gonna spend that money to water those fields. We've never done it, so.
So these would be mel, uh, wells, right, Commissioner? So that we can address that problem that we've had since two thousand and eight.
I, I'm, I'm saying, we still don't have the ability to do that at the other fields that we have. So I don't have any high hopes that we're going, first of all, we're gonna be able to afford to do it, but I don't have any hopes that that will happen anyway. Now, I may, I may be wrong. I just feel like the spirit of this grant was to be able to affect the entire community. Or the community surrounding that, not just the football community at one place, or not just the basketball community or the softball community at one place. And some of these things I think are outside of that. And I don't know what things that you did, didn't. I mean, like, in the previous thing, there was the shade structures. I don't really see that in here. I mean, clearly if people come out to watch kids or adults play ball, they're the people who will be using it. So they might need a shade structure, um.
So yes, ma'am, there was shade structures there for the, for the spectators. So we had, so everything in here was in the original, the original bids and the original grants. So yes, there was shade structures, there was new bleachers. So we had to make hard decisions that we could, if we had shade structures. But didn't have appropriate playing fields.
Who is we?
The staff and, uh, Larry Wallace and, um, LJA.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not happy with we making the decisions on what? What this, what should be left out of this, because I live in the neighborhood. And I know I'm never gonna go down there and play baseball. I might watch my grandson, but I'm not gonna sit out in the sun and do it. I would like to be able to go down and walk around the walking track. It says that there might be pathway lighting. Why can't we have a light from up above? You know, I, I, I feel like what y'all decided on in this grant. Worked for the activities that y'all want to do there. It was not based on what the entire community could use to be able to go out. And recreate and if there were a situation where you couldn't go in the library, you couldn't go in the gym, just like it was during COVID. So, or during the tornado. So I'm, I have to say, I'm very disappointed in what is, 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 is going on here. Because I think there's some things on here that are wants and I think there's some things, and I hate to say anything that James doesn't say. And I think there's some needs on here, um, but, but, but I, I don't think that we've hit the mark. So I'm really just not comfortable. I hate for you to have to, to, to do anything different, but I'm not happy with the, with the stuff that's on this list.
Okay, let's talk about the timing and everything else. Uh, where are we with that? What has gotta be done and when has it gotta be done?
So the, the engineering firm has worked very diligently over the last, good grief, sixteen, seventeen months. Just to get to this point. Um, and we are at the ninety day mark. For making a decision on accepting the lowest bid. Uh, based on the conversations that's been had with Piedmont. Um, could we rebid this? Yes. Uh, but back to TJ's point, I think it would require a separate document for rebid. Uh, because what was originally designed in twenty twenty-three, when we bid the workout. Uh, the prices came back at double what was expected. And the, we went to the state and asked DCA if they would cons, or not DCA, but, um, um. The state budget committee, if they would reconsider spending more money with Spalding County. As a result of the increased prices, uh, and they weren't, weren't able to do that. Uh, so they sent us back to the drawing board and began having, to begin having conversations about how much we could take out. To meet the nine million dollar mark. Um, I honestly, I was shocked that the money for the bid came back at double. Uh, but the cost of construction has increased that much. But that said, I, I think we would have to redesign to meet the spirit of what this. Uh, this grant fund would allow us to move forward with and rebid the project. And that would take a considerable amount of time, um, simply because it has been almost a year. And well, almost two years at this point since we've had the, the notification.
Steve, y'all put the bid out, you got the bid back ninety days ago. That is not our fault.
Right, eighteen million dollars.
What the hell happened in between that?
Eighteen million dollars.
I, I, it doesn't matter. Why are we getting it at the last day of ninety days? That is a problem I have. And you shouldn't put us in a situation where we're up against a wall. We totally get it that this is federal money or state money. And we can't do a lot with it, but no one came to us and asked us anything. What do you, what are your plans? As a matter of fact, I almost feel like it was kinda covert, that it was kept under wraps. Because now you asking us to make a decision based on information that's really, I mean, I can hear TJ or Larry. Or whoever talk all day about what the spirit of the grant is. But they are not the authority on that and they're not the authority on what is needed, not that I am. But I know that this only serves a certain section of the community. And if the improvement is supposed to serve everyone, so they have access to park facilities. This is far away from where that needs to be. I don't see walking trails. I don't see shade structures enough. Uh, uh, if someone wanted to go and walk at night, they couldn't because there's no overhead light, but there's overhead lights at the baseball field. So no, I'm not happy with this. I mean, I, I, I hear what you told Clay and I mean, I hate to say, you know what y'all did wrong on this. But I, I, I'm, I'm not.
It, it's my understanding that this was actually based on the athletic fields, like the grant wasn't for park improvements so much as. Field improvements. That was in, in my discussion with, uh, the state legislature who invented it and then made sure that we got it. It was specifically for that. So if we have to go back to the state and get what we're doing approved. I think they're only gonna approve it if that core mechanism is, is satisfied.
Not with that. If you bring the documentation, I wanna see the documentation because that documentation of the loan that I, grant that I read. Did not specifically say for sport. It is says, this is a grant for communities to create spaces where people can meet outdoors. When there are times like COVID or disasters where they cannot meet inside, where they can recreate during times that they can't meet inside. It said nothing about sports. It said nothing specifically about it being for a sport. So I really need y'all to bring that documentation here because that's not what I remember reading. And I feel fine about it if y'all show me that's what it says, but I sure don't believe it.
All right. My, my big concern is losing the money all the way around. Let's make sure we understand. I'm not for losing the money.
I'm never for losing the money.
Okay, so, uh, if you've backed us, if, not you, but if we're backed into a corner where we have to say something, it may not be what we wanna say, but losing the money is not an option to me.
I, I agree with that. Um, James, back to your point. Uh, David Knight was the one that brought this to the table for us and asked specifically for it to be considered for uh, baseball and, uh, the football fields, both at Ambucks and Volunteer. Uh, and he was very instrumental at helping us obtain this grant.
I wanna see the legislation from the grant, okay? I'm not talking about what, what whoever said, what somebody liked. I wanna see what the law said and gave us the money, because it didn't just come to us, it went to other places in the community, in the state as well.
All right, now, what options do we have? If we, if we could say no to it, and we don't get any money?
We, we could say no and not get money. We could say no and rebid, but that would take a considerable amount of work. Uh, and the state could still come back and, um, discontinue the grant for us.
Oh, would they do that?
We, because we are at the limit of time for spending of the federal funds.
This is like COVID.
No, you're not at the limit of times. The fed, and the federal funds is the twenty sixth of December, of twenty sixth.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're in, in May of twenty twenty five.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as long as that money is spent in a year and a half, so don't, don't get it twisted. We're not at the last minute.
So, does that mean it has to be completed?
Completed.
So, the.
That's my understanding is completed.
All right, so the fields would have to be all finished and done by, uh, December.
Twenty sixth.
Of twenty sixth.
Correct.
And it's gonna take a while to do all of this work.
I, I would like to know if that grant says that the work has to be completed by twelve twenty six, or it says it has to be allocated like twelve twenty six?
I, I will, I'll look for that.
Different thing.
It is.
All right, we've got break in between to be able to find this out, this information out, to be able to do it. Uh, so, okay, let's, uh, uh, let's kick the can right now, down the road, until six o'clock meeting. And then we'll see where we are and if we have to, what we wanna do at, at the six o'clock meeting.
That'll work.
All right, um, now, that's a, that's a whole lot with getting with Gwen to make sure she's square on what, what's going on.
I just wanna see the doc, if you show me the documentation where that's what it says, I'm not trying to stop anything else, but like, I don't depend on my memory. I wanna see it in writing. That's what it says.
Thank you. We want you to do that for us, too. So, okay. Um, TJ, if you would please stay at the podium, uh, as we move to the next agenda item to discuss the proposal for the creation of a master plan for our stormwater utility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, this is to consider to contract with our existing stormwater master service plan engineer on record, Lindsay Engineering Consulting LLC for phase one of the stormwater utility fee policy review and roadmap. Uh, this is essentially to, uh, provide the board of commissioners a fee option to fund stormwater division by fall of twenty twenty six. Um, and then this request that we're asking for here is actually included in our budget request for stormwater for the FY twenty six budget that you have, uh, previously reviewed. Next slide.
All right.
And the twenty five budget, isn't it?
Uh, to stand up the two persons, uh, the two people that we have in stormwater, yes, but we do have this listed in the twenty six budget for,
Specifically for phase one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, uh, phase one and phase two are in there. Uh, so the phase one engineering would be provided by, uh, Lindsay Engineering Consulting. Uh, they currently have the master services contract with Spalding County for several items. Those include the task order of, which is the response from Georgia EPD regarding our MS four. Uh, and then several other task orders that are, uh, for our MS four as well. Uh, they are also the engineer on record in support of MS four through our GIS department. And they're under separate task order in MS for MS four with Spalding County Water Authority, uh, to prop up the Spalding County's GIS data. Next slide. As you know, we're currently operating a utility. Um, however, our current MS four permit that you see here from the EPD, our permit number, um, ultimately, it's an unfunded mandate. So, what we are working towards where we would have a full stormwater department in place, and then how is that funding going to occur? Uh, and that's what this first phase would be. Next slide. These are the responsibilities that are dictated to us by the MS four permit. I'll just briefly go over these, uh, maintenance of existing facilities and assets. These are all stormwater related. Uh, waste disposal, system access and inventory, storm structure rehab and replacement, spill and runoff enforcement. Uh, these all must be approved by the EPD, and these are all within uh, being able to secure and maintain our permit. Next slide. I just got a little, something a little different. Um, these are response, additional responsibilities as dictated by a permit. Uh, these are called BMPs, and you start hearing that over the next few years, best management practices. This includes employee training, public outreach, structure inspection and maintenance, stream outfall screenings for illicit discharges, and flood management, uh, to include water quantity and quality standards. Uh, impaired stream monitoring and assessment, private stormwater facilities such as pond management, construction site inspection, and enforcement. Next slide. So, this relates to our actual compliance. Uh, this is through EPD. This, uh, compliance is mandated to us under our general permit. It's essential. Uh, however, funding is required. They do not, they do not give us the funding to do this. This is the EPD. Uh, we do get afforded some privileges for being at, for having an MS four permit that includes Spalding County being the local issuing authority, uh, and that's for land disturbance permits. And essentially, what this would be is unintended consequences for not having a permit is that any development permits for residential and commercial uh, could not be reviewed by the county staff and county in-house engineers or county, um, contracted engineers. And all of those permits would need to go through the state, which would add six to twelve months for all development coming into the county. Next slide.
Say that again.
Don't throw me in the right batch.
Excuse me?
What did you just say? Would you say that last statement you just did, said?
So, the per, the land disturbance permits and permits related to stormwater are currently being housed in-house. That's what the permit allows you to do. If you don't have that permit, as we do, and you don't comply with that permit, then all of that goes to the state to do. So, developers, uh, will have to go to the state. David's back there, he can he can help me with the exact order. But essentially, it takes the permitting out of the county's hands and puts it into the state's hands.
Why would that happen?
Uh, because that's, I'm gonna say that's the law. Is that the correct order?
Developers have an excellent, excellent lobby.
No, but I'm saying, we don't have a storm, we're not set up for stormwater. So, if someone comes in to develop, there is, there is some requirements that their property has a, a stormwater drainage system. But we don't have anything in the county that tells us your stormwater should be running in this direction, or you should be doing something with a driveway pipe to make sure that the drainage ditch is open. So, which I'm sure that that's.
Actually, we do. We are an MS four county. We do issue land disturbance permits. Um, what TJ, I think, is indicating is that we don't want to lose that ability to be able to permit for land disturbance or for, um, where your stormwater detention or retention ponds go on the property. We, we do have that authority right now. You are a utility. You are an MS four utility. Uh, do we currently charge? No. Are we currently operating as a, a pay utility? No, ma'am. Uh, but we are a MS four permitted site. In fact, uh, I think your second or third slide showed our permit number with EPD.
So, when fully implemented, and that's what the goal is over the next two to four years, and we would be like operating a hundred percent within the permit guidelines, uh, this is what the stormwater utility would look like. Uh, we would be, have public health and welfare. Um, MS four is regulated by the state permit. Uh, the county would be subject to penalties for non-compliance. And in Spalding County, would be responsible for cleaning, maintaining, inspecting, and documenting, uh, all stormwater facilities. And then our current resources are partially concentrating now on the maintenance and documentation of some of these implemented tasks. So, the two, the two, uh, staff members that we have now, they're concentrating strictly on easement cleaning. Um, and to give you a quick update on that, over the last forty-five days they've been employed, we're about thirty work order projects have been completed by them so far. Next slide. So, overall, uh, these are the goals to create the actual stormwater department. We are a utility. Uh, but this would move us towards the department itself and then provide for a fee-based funding mechanism. So, next slide. So, we have been working towards this, the county has, over the last two to three years, just to show some of the investment that has already been put into this process. Uh, the approval of Eagle View, which gives us the ability to determine and identify the impervious layers uh, within everybody's property. The GIS department, uh, we partner with Spalding County Water Authority. Uh, the GIS field technician that you recently approved funding for. This is the field technician that will be working directly with the stormwater crews and then developing, uh, the information needed to go back into GIS for our reporting for MS four. The roadway asset services, so the roadway assessment that we're doing right now also includes a sidewalk and curb inventory. Those are actually stormwater assets. And then confirm, our new work order system at Public Works ties and integrates GIS and with the MS four reporting. So, these are items that have been invested in over the last two to three years, uh, to move towards the stormwater department. Next slide. What type of expenses would we expect in the future for stormwater, uh, maintaining the easements, repairing and maintaining our current system, construction of additional infrastructure, and in public education? Uh, you'll see over the next two to four years, these would be the needs. Uh, manager, additional GIS support, equipment, staff, and supplies. Next slide. So, the current request is for phase one. Phase one is the engineer, the process to determine the appropriate method for the utility fee structure. After that, we'd be followed by phase two, which would determine the actual roadmap and recommendation to assess the impervious surfaces and document the process. So, the ultimate goal here is to provide you with an assessment, uh, to how, or options to actually have a fee-based utility based on impervious surfaces throughout the county so that that would fund this department. That goal would be to have that completed by fall of twenty twenty six. Um, next slide. So, this is the urgency, um, in relation to this. It's currently, we're sus, we're funding the easement crew and some of the minor stormwater activities through the general fund. And it's just not sustainable through that fund. Our, our infrastructure is aging. Uh, infrastructure added with new residential and commercial development that's occurring every day. Uh, liability of lawsuits, y'all are familiar with, some of that, that's ongoing. Uh, and then the possibility of BPD fines and loss of our ability to be the local issuing authority for development. Um, and essentially, when we do that, development stops. So, we would be delayed six to twelve months as those. We would have to bring the state in to assist us with that. Uh, next slide. So, these are steps needed. Just an overview. Uh, we would be developing a stormwater management program, uh, determining the level of service that the Spalding County and the board of commissioners would want to deliver. Uh, cost of this service analysis, how much would that level of service cost? Customer database development, what is our customer database? Um, impervious area delineation. So, uh, when you're charging a fee based on impervious layers, uh, what that means is, is that the layers that do not perviate the water, uh, you need to assess that so you could charge accordingly. What would the billing system and the billing system setup look like? And then, violently required task to maintain the permit. Next slide. So, this is the copy of the phase one task order. Um, and as I said, this would be, this is included in our request for FY twenty six. Um, we are bringing it to you today so that we can move forward in hopes of meeting the fall twenty twenty six deadline, uh, to give you information to begin the fee system.
Okay, let, let's, let's back up here, make sure we all understand. This is in your budget for twenty six. TJ's bringing it to us now to start the process early so that he can meet the timeline lines that we've already said we want.
So, we can put it into play beginning, uh, July first at the new budget.
But we think that, uh, the system, the money that he's asking for is already in the budget that we've seen that we're gonna approve tonight or vote on tonight.
That, that's correct. Should the VOC make the recommendation to approve the budget, this would be in that budget.
And we're, we're turning this into a utility.
It, it's already a utility. Uh, MS four is a utility.
But, uh.
It is turning it, uh, so that this, uh, utility is revenue neutral. That is correct. So, it doesn't come out of our general fund.
Okay, okay. Comments from the?
I think this is great. Uh, that said, the, are we doing anything about the, the known instances of the City of Griffin dumping their wastewater into the county?
So, the short answer to that is, um, this process, this project will afford us the opportunity to know exactly how much is coming out and how much we're putting in, because there are certain uh, areas where it's reciprocal. Um, so, we, we want to understand more specifically where our biggest issues are across, uh, the county with respect to stormwater.
All right, this is stormwater, not the wastewater that the city is pumping into.
This is all stormwater, has nothing to do with, uh, with sewage.
Okay, all right. Everybody square on what we're talking about, doing tonight?
I want you to know, uh, because I, I just wanna know, when and how do we think this will become revenue neutral? Because if, if, if before, last year, we spent no money on stormwater, that I can, that, that was a budget item. I mean, they may have been doing some things, but we, it wasn't budgeted. And then, how much did we spend this year on what we had this year, where there are two maintenance people who I'm assuming is being supervised by Public Works? And then, what would it look like for next year? And then, how many years out will we be before we hit net neutral? Now, I'm not saying that it's not a good thing. I'm just saying that I would be interested in knowing what those numbers are and when they're gonna occur. The other thing is that, um, we absolutely have to, have to have the first phase done before we can even know what, if anything, that we can do, or what it would cost. And I think it's, um, because a lot of the work has already been done through our collaboration with the Water Authority, it makes sense to, to, to use this agency. But when I hear you say, we're talking about December of twenty twenty six, maybe having, are we saying having phase one and two, two and three complete, or we're saying just having phase one?
No, it's our intent to bring back to you phase two and three to be complete with a full decision packet before, uh, next fiscal year. Not fiscal year twenty six, fiscal year twenty seven.
So.
So, you will know whether or not we will be net neutral and what that time limit would look like.
Okay, um, one of the things that I, and I'm sure that they will address it, that I think has been a problem for us is like, when these, the lady came and talked to us about the water running out of her property, out of the neighbor's property into hers. We don't have anything designed in our ordinance that tells a builder or developer where they need to send their stormwater. And I don't think sending it to the next property over is never a good idea.
Yeah.
Because the next person that comes is gonna have to try to figure out how to take your water and their water and move it. So, I'm hoping that something like. So I'm hoping that something like that will come, come out of this as another avenue that we, we can address. And then I, I, I have to go back and think with all the subdivisions that we have now that really are not connected to a stormwater system. What, what, will this study help us to see how we can go back and retrofit what we're doing? Or how when we, um, make sure that our facilities are up and being maintained, are we able to go back then? And then start, um, charging people for providing that service at that time? Okay, that's all.
Okay, all right, uh, thanks TJ.
All right, thank you.
Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask John Luggatt to step forward and share the update on our annual contract for employee health, vision, dental benefits. John, welcome.
Good afternoon, thanks for having me. John Luggatt, MSI Benefits Group, I have the same presentation in front of me, but, um, about ten slides I wanna go through, I think I'm reading good news. This is a recap, uh, I always like to re- refresh everybody's mind what happened last year. So last year, we renewed our medical with Cigna, Veracity. And, uh, we took on about a five hundred seventy-five thousand dollar expected decrease, that was what was approved. Renewed the FSA DCA and, and kept the fifty thousand dollar wellness in, in play, wellness fund in, in, in for this year. Uh, obviously, the medical's up for renewal this year, we'll be talking about that. The dental renewed with Cigna last year, there was no change to the plan designer employee premiums. There was an increase to the counties, you see there, again, that's up for renewal this year, which we'll get into. Vision was in a rate guarantee, so it's up for renewal this year, which we will go through. And then life and disability is under a rate cap, so it's not on the, it's not up for renewal in twenty-five. Um, our wellness, employee assistance program and carve-out radiology program are also under a rate guarantee, so no, no expected, uh, changes there. On the next slide, this is kind of a, a recap, or is a recap of how the plan's been running, so the county's, as you know.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Tell me what the carve-out radiology program is about.
So this was the know the cost program that was implemented last year, which allows, uh, members to receive CAT scans, CR, uh, X-rays, MRIs at no cost to them, um, if they go to a know the cost provider. And I think we've had somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five range, uh, as far as, uh, images that have, that have been filed. And members have gotten those, uh, handled over the past six or so months.
So you, you go to this program before you get a CT and then the program pays for it, or you go and get it and then you come back to the program?
No, if, if you need to get a, a CT scan, you call know the cost, you schedule it through them, through one of their providers.
Okay.
And there's no cost to the member and to the county, uh, the anticipated savings so far is about twenty-six thousand dollars. So by going through this program, it's much cheaper than going through, you know, a local provider.
Ju- just as an aside, we had a couple of our employees, um, that actually went and had to have CT scans done and it was completely free. They scheduled it, went and it was free.
Okay.
A lot of positive feedback.
That's good.
Do they know about it?
Yes.
Okay.
So slide, uh, next slide, historical health plan spend analysis. Really looking over to the right, this is the current plan year claims data through February, so we've annualized the numbers. Uh, down at the bottom, if you'll notice, uh, we're looking to come in just over six point two million based on how claims are ran so far this year. As you can see, that, that comes out for a per employee, per year, uh, cost of about thirteen thousand six thirty. Which is running much better than what was budgeted. So if you notice on the bottom note, we have, uh, the total gross cost that was approved for this current plan year, was it seven, just over seven point eight million? Well, you see where we're running. So we're running significantly below what was budgeted for the plan year, about one point six million below as, as the state. So you know, the plan year will end in June, so claims can, can change, but that's all good news.
I would use the word great, but I'll accept good.
Good, yes, the next slide actually has a little bit more on it. So this is a month by month, uh, slide four is a month by month, uh, cap, uh, recap of employees enrolled. Our, our admin network fees, stop loss premiums, um, total fixed costs. And then our, our actual, the max liability and then how the actual claims were running. Normally, uh, uh, or not normally, when, when we're budgeting for how the plan's gonna run, you take the max liability and you budget eighty percent of the max. So eighty percent of max is it, is the expected claim liability and the number that's used, so that was the number we used last year, it's the number we'll use this year. However, as you can see, the percentage down the bottom right, fifty-eight point eight percent. So if we're running at eighty percent, we're running as expected, but we're not, we're running mu- much below that eighty percent number. Uh, again, about, I think the annual net difference to the counties about one point seven six million, based on how claims are running through February. And then we get into some of the reasons why, as you know, we have the pharmacy program through Veracity, this was implemented a couple of years on slide five. This is a month by month, uh, chart of how our claims are running. You can see the first year, uh, that twenty twenty-two, twenty-three plan year, we were with Cigna. We changed in twenty-three to Veracity, so we spent one point, just over one point eight million in pharmacy claims prior to the change. Last year went down about a million dollars. And it's actually running even better this year. And one of the things we like to point out is if you'll notice in the top right-hand corner, it says our average per member per month cost for pharmacy is at eighty-one seventy-one. The national average is around a hundred and fifty-five dollars, so we're, you can see where, you know, how, how well the program is running. Additionally, the county receives a hundred percent of rebates back, so the rebates are actually not factored in here, there's a note there. Um, through March, we, the county's received just over seventy-six thousand dollars back in re- in rebates that's paid monthly. And you know, the program, the, it, it's the personal importation and the, and those, the, uh, specialty patient assistance care. We have forty-nine employees enrolled in the personal importation and there's eight enrolled in the, uh, you know, specialty patients assistance care program. So that kinda caps how we, how the, the experience, the next slide is our renewal. As, as you know, we, we are currently with Cigna, uh, as the administrator, we use the Cigna network. Our stop loss insurance is through Cigna and we carved out the pharmacy with Veracity. Right now, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar stop loss deductible, so any, any amount, uh, any claim for any member is paid by the county up to that dollar amount, which is when the reinsurance would kick in. Um, initially out the gate, Cigna was, was, uh, a little higher than where they are now, we did go to market. And we pushed back on them, and so you, you'll see the recommended option, you'll see that the annual, uh, admin fees are not changing. Uh, our stop loss is that they're requesting is going from two oh two to two thirty, that's a per employee per month. And then our aggregate premium is gonna remain the same. So our overall fixed cost, annual stop loss premium is going from one point two million five to one million two thirty-five. And that's about a, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollar annual increase or about a two and a half percent increase. Now, you'll notice the six-month admin credit, we pushed back on Cigna trying to get them to come down a little bit better due to the competitive market quote that we received from, uh, Everest Re. And they couldn't lower the premiums, the premiums were as low as possible, but they gave us that credit. So we were s- receive a, an admin credit of a hundred and thirty-one thousand over a six-month period. Um, the annual, so overall annual fixed cost is going up about thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars or two percent. But our big savings is on the pharmacy, I mean, is on the claims. Because the claims have been running so well, uh, the actual claim liability is dropping about fifteen, um, point seven percent. So bottom line, our annual expected cost, budget cost is gonna go down about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Under the recommended option. If you go over to the right, you'll see, you know, uh, the alternate option through Meritane. We did look at, at Meritane and you'll notice the fixed costs are right on top of each other. And, you know, by going with, if we were to move to that option, that would mean changing, uh, the administrator, changing networks. And because we got Cigna down to a very competitive number, your claims are your claims. So we bet, we basically feel like, you know, the claims are gonna run the way they're running, the fixed cost is in line, we think it makes sense to stay with Cigna. All right.
John, you done?
I'm sorry?
Are you done yet?
Um, not yet.
I see a couple of questions.
Just, hey, you can go ahead and ask questions now if you'd like.
Um, who you going now, I'm just looking at. So, um, we had some claims this year and last year. And the deductible structure was just impossible. It was this much, this is your deductible, but then after that, it's a split of this, but only for these things. And then there's a split of this for that, and then it's, there's this deductible and, and literally from October twenty-three, I'm still getting bills in the mail from various, like, oh yeah, you owe us another twenty dollars, like, what is happening, like?
Okay.
There has to be a way to make that more straightforward. Because, you know, I mean, I've, I've, I have degrees in this and if I don't understand it, like, our, our average employees are, uh, i- it's, it's impossible. So what, what can we do, I mean, I know when I first started on the board here, we had a thousand dollar deductible. That was it, it was our thousand dollar deductible. And then we went to four thousand and then we offset that with like a self-insured.
HRA, health reimbursement arrangement back when the county was fully insured.
Right, to drop that effectively back to, to one thousand. Although from the insurance side, it was four, so it lowers us by like six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And then we put, and we never hit that quarter million dollars for that reimbursement, so it was a huge net win for us. I'm not sure why we've gone away from that, but now we've got the thousand dollar deductible or close to it.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah, but then after that, there's.
Co-insurance.
But it, it, but it's not like co-pays, it's like eighty twenties for this and sixty forties for that and.
Actually, if you go to the next slide.
Then that's just more deductibles.
The next slide has the actual plan design.
Perfect.
Um, so this is, this is our current plan design, fifteen hundred dollar annual deductible per individual capped at three thousand for a family. Um, and we do have a plan recommendation change on here, but you're, you're right. So, uh, pretty, this is a, this is a pretty, uh, good benefit plan. I mean, when we look at, when we benchmark them, you know, our average deductible that we see for public sector clients generally is over two thousand dollars. So this is a pretty competitive plan. And as far as what you're talking about, it is unfortunately the nature of the beast, that's, uh, the way plans typically work. Unless it's a hundred percent co-insurance, once you meet that deductible for certain services, inpatient outpatient, you know, services like that. Um, you pay that, you pay your twenty percent share until you hit your maximum out of pocket and then that's when the plan pays a hundred percent. So that's the, the, the setup. What I see, um, a lot is.
So what's the maximum out of pocket?
So the maximum out of pocket is sixty-nine hundred per year for an individual and thirteen thousand eight hundred for a family. So I've got that boxed because we're actually, we're actually making a recommendation to reduce that by thousand.
Okay, by one thousand?
By a thousand dollars for an individual and by two thousand for a family. Due to the, the savings and due to the out-of-pocket being separate on the pharmacy. That was one of the plan recommendations.
Is there, is there a way to internally reduce that further? Like we had before, like when we put that quarter million dollars before to like reimburse?
So an HRA is, makes a lot of sense, you know, based on why, why we did it here when you were fully insured. But essentially now we're self-funded, the, the county's paying the claims either way, so that's why we did away with the HRA. Because you would have somebody paying it and you'd be reimbursing them. Instead of having that four thousand dollar deductible with the HRA, we, we knocked it down to, to fifteen hundred. Now, we could take it, we could adjust the deductible, we can, the county can make, you know, plan changes i- in, any, any way you'd like. Um, obviously, it can, it will impact the claim liability, the expected claim liability, what, what you're budgeting for. So that was one thing we, we were looking to try to do here is improve the plan by reducing the out-of-pocket. And my note there is, you know, they give us a, a decrement and they tell us it's one percent, so expect the claim liability to go up one percent. That calculates out to roughly seventy thousand dollars. I don't agree with their math, it was an underwriters' math, because when we, we ran the numbers, we looked at only two people that even reached their out-of-pocket maximum over twelve months. So, um, yeah, but I mean, as far as under a self-insured plan like we have here, the, the county can design, design the program.
But, but that's what I'm saying, so if only two people hit that out-of-pocket maximum, uh, then the maximum's an illusion. You see what I'm saying, like, okay, it covers you beyond that, yeah, but it's not, it's covering zero people, it's covering two people beyond that. So is there a way to, um, you know, if only two people hit that, okay, then let's, let's inter, let's leave this with Cigna or whatever, and then let's create that quarter million dollar set aside that will reimburse that out-of-pocket maximum back down. Again, when we did it, we didn't come, I don't think we hit a hundred thousand dollars, even though we set two hundred fifty aside for it. Because, like you said, not a lot of people are going over really that deductible. But, um, I think it certainly makes a lot of sense for people that have catastrophic issues.
Yep, so, so you're making a recommendation to, uh, basically do an external part HRA for those three individuals.
Well, not just, not like those individuals, but for anybody, it would cover anybody.
But just basing it on the reality of what we've got sitting in front of us. It would just, it would have been for those just three individuals for the previous twelve months.
Sh- sure, and again, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be a quarter million dollars, it can be, I mean, I'm just using that, cause that's what the number we pegged from before. But again, we didn't, even before, we didn't come remotely close to that. So we could set aside some amount to say, hey, wait a minute, you're, even though the plan says this, Spalding County says your actual out-of-pocket is, is this, does that make sense?
It does, but it's a pay me now, pay me later kinda thing. So rather than implementing an HRA and having that extra step where someone has to say, hey, I, I paid this, now you've gotta refund me. The county's still covering that cost, so I would recommend improving the plan. Lower the out-of-pocket, lower the deductible, um, rather than making someone pay it and then get reimbursed. If you're gonna reimburse them, go ahead and lower, because the county's self-funded, you're paying the claims, uh, through Cigna or you're reimbursing someone directly, still paying them.
But if we reimburse someone directly, we only reimburse who we would have to reimburse. If we're lowering the plan, we're paying upfront, right?
Correct, correct.
So we would pay no matter, even if no one used it, if we lowered the upfront, right?
No, it, it's still gonna be, uh, only when there's a claim.
Steve, you tracking with me?
Yeah, I, I, I am tracking with you, the decrement would be different because we would be paying for the full pool, we wouldn't be paying just for the three. So what you're recommending.
The hypothetical number of people.
Hypothetical ten, um, uh, because the, the higher.
I don't know that I agree.
The, the higher probability would be that it would, we would be paying less than the quarter of a million, just like you indicated.
I mean, uh, if those numbers are correct, we could, I mean, that number might be fifty thousand or something, you know what I'm saying, a- at a most.
Yeah. I guess my point is, if, let's just use an example, say we wanted to reduce the deductible thousand dollars and we'll take it down to five hundred dollars. The stop loss, Cigna is gonna come in and say, well, this is your expected claim liability, say it goes up, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. They say your claim liability by doing that's gonna go up two hundred thousand dollars, because you're paying claims sooner with a five hundred dollar deductible. Now, if you say, we're gonna keep it at fifteen hundred dollars, we're gonna refund the last thousand dollars through an HRA program. Technically speaking, you know, you're still, you're gonna refund them when they have that claim and they submit it to be reimbursed. Or they have that claim under a five hundred dollar deductible and the county's paying that thousand dollars as a claim for that member. So it's the same, the only thing that would happen is you would have members not forget that they have an HRA. Uh, your employees, and they would not submit for reimbursement.
I, I'm, I'm not so worried about the deductible, fifteen hundred dollars is already loaded.
You're talking about out-of-pocket.
I'm talking about out-of-pocket maximum, lowering that to, I mean.
In, in, so did the thirteen thousand eight hundred going to eleven thousand eight hundred, it would go to zero.
Well, not, but like, yeah.
So that, 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 I don't understand. Okay, I hear what you're saying, but in reality, the problem happens when people go into the hospital and have a very large bill and they have to pay their twenty percent. If you have a seventy, easily you can have a seventy thousand dollar bill if you stay in the hospital more than three days. So twenty percent of that, you're still gonna have to pay ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars.
But that still maxes out at your out-of-pocket maximum, right?
Right.
So it's only the eighty twenty above the deductible up to whatever the out-of-pocket maximum. So if we lower that out-of-pocket maximum to five thousand via this HRA.
Still gonna pay the twenty percent though, if you're.
Only up to that out-of-pocket maximum.
Yeah, o- only up to the maximum.
So when you and Steve were saying y'all got a bill for fifteen thousand dollars.
That's because that's where our out-of-pocket maximum was.
At, it was at what?
Even though we're only paying twenty percent of it.
Yeah, I'm confused.
So, so you have the deductible and when you hit your deductible, then you stop paying dollar for dollar and then you only pay twenty, twenty percent.
Right.
Until you hit the out-of-pocket maximum. What I'm saying is we lower the out-of-pocket maximum to a more controllable amount. Eighteen, uh, thirteen eight, uh, even eleven eight is, I mean, that's twenty-five percent of a deputy salary.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, like, that's, that's huge for their kid getting their car wrecked or something and they gotta pay out, you know, twenty-five percent of their pre-tax income, that's, so lowering that, whether it's through the plan or through a side deal, like, that would be, I think that'd be a big deal for our, our employees. So that, that eighty twenty pays out, you know, you have to pay above your deductible, but only up to the maximum out-of-pocket max.
Right, so, John, back to your question earlier about why we would not. So, from your perspective, why, why would we change this out of pocket maximum down to five thousand? And what would the cost be to the county for doing that?
Well, we're looking at, we were making the recommendation to, to drop it to fifty nine, so we're talking about another nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, that, that's.
That's for the individual. I'm talking about the family.
You're talking about dropping that family to five thousand?
And then like the individual would be?
Twenty five?
Or, or like four or some, oh, it'd have to be.
Be half, twenty five hundred?
Yeah.
And we could get those numbers, but we're probably looking at it, you know, a, a five or six, seven percent claim factor.
So, at a one percent is seventy, so, three hundred and fifty?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to get the, the underwriter to, to give us the numbers there.
I'm, I'm guessing this is.
John, have you got more slides or anything else?
I do.
Let's go on, go on through the rest of them. Thank you.
No, no worries. Alright, so the next slide, one of the things we were, wanted to bring up was G L P one medications, weight loss drugs. Um, the county, of course, is self-funded with Veracity. This is something that the county can elect to, uh, cover. Veracity, who is our current pharmacy benefit manager, uh, does make some recommendations as your P B M. If you, uh, if you do elect to cover weight loss drugs, and, and this kind of explains it here. So their recommended copay for these drugs would be about a three hundred, would be three hundred and fifty dollars.
Why? Why?
Well, I, I, the effective copay with a manufactured copay card, so, is about two hundred. So there are, there are manufactured copays cards that they would be, anybody that's on one of these two drugs, would get it down to a two hundred dollar copay, and that's, that's a comparable price for online weight loss pharmacy. The drugs, these drugs roughly are about a thousand dollars a month. This is just their recommended for any of their employers that do elect to cover weight loss.
So, so what is the copay for our medications now, and why would this be different than the specialty drugs, the generic drugs, formulary?
Well, specialty drugs, we're, a lot of, most of the members are able to get them through the programs. We're not paying anything, because we're getting it off the plan. It's paid, it's through the foundation for those drug manufacturers, so members aren't paying anything for those specialty drugs. But right now.
When you're saying specialty drugs, what do you mean that they're not paying because of manufacturing?
So, with Veracity, we implemented a few years ago, you may recall that they have, uh, for specialty drugs, Veracity helps members enroll into a program that allows them to get the drug at no cost, or at a very discount, very big discount. So, I think we have roughly only about nine members, uh, that are enrolled, but they're getting those drugs mailed to their house every month at no cost.
Oh, but that's, that's two hundred dollars a month for that medicine. But if you, if you're getting semvastatin, which is a blood pressure medicine, which is not formulary naturally.
There's a, there's a difference. Veracity's actual recommendation is to not cover weight loss drugs. Most employers don't.
I, I get that, but we, we live in a, in a very fat world.
Sure.
And we, we need our employees to be healthy, and we need to help them. But, but my point is that it's as if having obesity is a whole different illness than having high blood pressure, or having glaucoma. I don't know why it's got to go, if you gotta get glaucoma drops, how much does that cost when you pay your copay? Does that cost five hundred dollars? So if you, or if a doctor determines that you have one of the comorbidities associated with taking a G L P, not for weight loss, simply for health reasons that would associate with weight loss, then why should you have to pay two hundred dollars over what you're paying for your eloquence? Or your something else that costs money. What, but, but I don't understand that. You understand what I'm saying? Why is it that they are having to pay for this medicine, which is for a medical condition so much more than if they're paying for a, a blood pressure medicine, a heart medicine, a kidney medicine?
It, it is just a recommendation. As the P B M, the, the county said, we, we, we won't make you pay anything.
But, but why can't they go under their regular pharmacy program? Are they saying they don't offer it under that, at that price?
That's correct.
It's, i- i- it's, it's completely up to the county on what you want an employee or a member to pay if you elect to cover these drugs. It's truly due to the cost of the drug and considered a lifestyle issue, right? You know, um, this is for weight loss. I mean, someone could.
It's not. I mean, weight loss.
These drugs are F D A approved for weight loss. They're the only two.
Right, but they're also F D A approved for comorbidities associated with high cholesterol, with hypertension, with atherosclerosis and heart disease. So if you have one of those comorbidities, a doctor can write you a prescription for that to help you with those other in, um, those other things that you have going on. So, this is, there is a weight loss use, but there is also a clinical, other clinical use. So that is why I have a problem with trying to understand that if I, if I get G L P from Tricare, and I know we don't have Tricare, it's forty three dollars. If I get Dupixen injection for my allergy, it's forty three dollars, and they're both specialty drugs. If I get Lipitor, it's ten. So if we have a pharmacy program that says for your regular stuff, it's ten dollars, and for your extra brand stuff is thirty five, how come they got to pay two hundred dollars? I don't understand.
If it's medically required, um, then, back to John's point, uh, the specialty drugs for those nine individuals that we have on the specialty program, they're paying zero. They're not paying anything. Uh, that said, if someone goes to a physician and says, I want to use a drug for a G L P for weight loss, that's completely different. It's outside the scope.
I understand that, and I just want to make sure that he understands that.
So, so this, this cost is just for, if you're getting it for weight loss.
That's correct.
Whereas if you're getting it for the comorbidities of.
Then you, you typically pay zero.
Okay, well, see, you didn't say that, because we have not allowed any G L P medications to be paid for under the pharmacy program at all. Have you, do they pay for your stuff?
Um, they did for a little while, now it's back to a twenty five copay.
Twenty five dollars.
So, so yeah, twenty five dollars is different than two hundred. That's all I'm saying. And then, so my other concern would be, which you, you guys just explained, I was under the impression if you had a hundred thousand dollar bill and you had to pay twenty percent, that your part was twenty percent. But you're saying if our, if our max is sixty nine hundred or seven thousand, after, you only have to pay up to seven thousand.
That, that is correct. That is maximum out of pocket.
So how come y'all ended up with those huge bills?
Uh, great question, and I appealed mine.
Okay, alright.
A lot of times what happens is, i- i- it's a provider billing outside the contract. Um, whereas the plan paid the contracted amount, and then the, the provider may then go around and try to balance bills, so you just have to look into it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say this one thing. We have been trying, I know, for ten or twelve years to help our employees who are struggling with weight loss. People have signed up for weight programs, they've signed up for gym, they've signed up for Zoom, and we've done everything. And I think the evidence of that is shown in this, in this document that he's shown us that our health costs have gone down. And I think that we also know that we're, we're, we're kind of in a pandemic about obesity. And so, part of the medical costs for medicines, doctor business, all of those things are sucked into that. And I just think if we have an opportunity to give people a chance to, um, to be able to lose weight if they're not able to, and I think according to the plan that says that, you know, there's, there's little room for abuse in here. Meaning that if you're not showing that you're on the program, you get to go home without the pill, or the shot, or whatever. And I think that's good, because we want people to be involved in their recovery, but I, I just, I'm just trying to figure out, this is another tool. It's not the answer to everything for us. Uh, everybody won't want this. But some people who want it and will, maybe they'll stay here a couple more years longer, because they won't be stroking out or having a heart attack.
Yeah, I have to jump on this grenade a little bit, because I went to Steve and I said, hey, I want to do something about those people that want to do weight loss that is not a medical issue. Can we figure out a way so that they pay part of it, some of it, to be able to do it, so they're into the business of, I want to do it, I'm willing to pay my portion to be able to do it, which is what I think John's got us in here. If you're interested in trying to do this, not for a medical specific reason, but for a different reason, and it's gonna cost you two hundred dollars a month versus a thousand.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I get that. If you're just wanting to lose weight, but I know very, you know, unless you're somebody, nobody in here. Maybe, maybe if you're Erica, got two pounds to lose, yeah, I want y'all to look at her funny. But if I come up and tell you that my B M I is thirty two, I don't care how good you think I look, my heart knows it's my B M I is thirty two. My kidneys know I'm, my B M I. And so I totally agree with you. Let's offer people the opportunity to do it. Whether or not we decide that the copay should be two hundred dollars, if, I feel very good that you said that if it is a case that is medical, then.
Di- different story.
Then it's covered.
Yeah.
But if, you know, if it's weight loss, I think if you gotta go out and spend money at a, for weight loss surgery, maybe paying two hundred dollars for a month for a prescription is not huge.
And some people want to do that, you know.
Yeah, but I'm saying that's a way to make it affordable for them in a way in which they've not been able to do it.
So, Steve got, Steve worked that, so that it, it does what I wanted to do, and I appreciate that. And I think in the end, John was all behind that. So, alright, let's go on.
Good job.
Thank you. Um, I'll sh- I'll highlight the dental and the vision on, on, actually on slide twelve. If you want to go to slide twelve, this kind of ties it all together. That's, this is just a timeline. So this is what we're looking at. You've got current on the left, you've got your health plan, dental, vision, and the basic life. You're, you're, you're seeing the, the, the reduction in, uh, the cost on the medical, when you look over at the recommended option, which is staying with Cigna. Uh, you see the cost go from seven million two twenty two to six million two forty three. On our dental, we did get an increase on the dental. We did go to market. Um, we had, I think, the standard came in with, with a quote that was somewhat competitive. We pushed back on Cigna a little bit and got them to come down. We think it makes sense sticking with Cigna on the dental due to the network, but there is a slight increase on the dental. So a hundred and sixty three thousand go a hundred, going to a hundred and eighty eight thousand. Same thing on the vision, slight increase, went to market. Cigna was the recommended option to stay with, with them. Keeping everything under the MyCigna app, the, the, the invoice, the I D cards. And then the basic life insurance didn't change, as I mentioned. So when you tie all this together, you see the county's total expected cost current is just over, or just under seven point five million, and it would go to just over six point five million. A reduction, it would reduce to just over six point five million, which is about a twelve point seven percent reduction, or nine hundred fifty two thousand. And then the other two options that were put on here as far as to get approval is reducing the, uh, out of pocket plan, or, or reducing the out of pocket, individual out of pocket. That's something the county would like to do, and then of course, covering the G L one P one meds.
And staff's recommendation for both of these is to include that into the program for this year. Uh, that would afford us roughly a six hundred and fifty two thousand dollar decrease overall. Uh, with, staff has had, uh, the opportunity to have conversations with many of our cohorts across the state. And many of you know those cohorts, the county managers across other counties who are experiencing anywhere from a thirty to a fifty percent increase in their overall premium adjustments for fiscal year twenty six, and for us to come in at, uh, a twelve point seven percent decrease, uh, just absolutely phenomenal for what we're seeing overall. So very, very happy.
That's just because we're getting more healthy, isn't it?
Well, well, I'm not saying that we're getting more healthy, but, uh. We've not had as many traumatic cases, uh, and just as an aside, are allocated to actual employees. We are hiring younger people coming to work for us who are, are healthier, so that helps quite a bit.
I, I want one more question, Mr. Chairman. So Steve, I know that you've done the, you got the budget for us, and it's looks like we have a twelve percent decrease. So, has that money already been allocated?
Yes, ma'am.
So, because, I mean, I think, you know, if there were a savings, if we were able to, and, and I don't know that everybody would do it or take advantage of it, but if there were a way for, for there to be a reduction um, in people's deduct, deductibles, that they could come back and say, okay, my deductible was, I don't know, whatever, it's fifteen hundred, and we can either di- you know, take five hundred off, or take seven fifty off, or reduce the family down to maybe ten or eleven. It's, it's obviously going to help some, but I don't know what that looks like in a number, and since everything is already in place in a budget, and that money is just really air now.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of air right now, but, uh, do afford us the opportunity to go back and take a look at what we could do. Um, you know, I've got some ideas in my head that I would really like to bounce off of John and, uh, our county attorney. Where, you know, one of the, one of my thoughts just off the top of my head, as I've been contemplating this, is to preload an H S A with a certain amount of money, so that we can afford that level of benefit.
Assistance if someone requests that.
That's correct.
I, I just think that it, it would help them just to know that if something happened, even if it's five hundred dollars, that's five hundred dollars that you don't have to take out of your pocket, if you can come back and say, I, my, I hit my deductible, here's my bills, can, can I get a reimbursement? Whatever that number is.
Ryan, you're, you're a hundred percent in with us, right? How, the rest of us are, how is that for you? How, how is the current program, how are you doing with the current program? Remember, a few years ago, you had a big issue.
This year, I mean, I have, I've had very little complaints. I mean, everything's, um, anytime I've had questions, um, Veracity and, uh, the, the pharmacy, I use that Anchor Pharmacy. I mean, been very helpful. I mean, and I've, like, missed my meds like one week, and that's it.
Alright, is anybody hearing stuff from our employees overall? I mean, this isn't, uh, I'm not hearing a lot from employees.
I want us to try to still, even though we're, you know, we're giving a cost of living increase, which I know, you know, it's not really where inflation is, but we, it still will help us to stay competitive, and, and that is something that we can offer them if we're able to figure out how to make that happen. So that it will help.
We'll work, we'll work that.
To know that that money can be available.
What do you mean not staying with inflation? You heard the state come in here and tell us that inflation was up.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
John, that's really all great news. I think you should be with a big white beard and a thing over your back walking in here. It's just been Christmas for us. So thank you. We appreciate it.
I'm sorry I didn't give you as hard a time as I did.
As Ashley.
That's right.
Next item on the, on the agenda is an update from the county attorney, Stephanie Wyndham, regarding the contract forty two construction replacement airport utilities relocation phase two with G dot.
Mr. Chairman, this is the allocation of the remainder of the money that the state of Georgia provided for the Griffins Spalding County Regional Airport, and, um, G dot had been just giving those funds out to the airport authority in the same way as they always have, which actually left a good bit of money at the state level that, um, you know, maybe through some oversight, could have been sent to some other airport. And therefore, they were instructed by someone far more powerful than I to, to allocate the remainder of those funds, and so this contract does that. They made the corrections that we had asked them to with the last, um, sponsorship agreement, and this one is approved as deformed, and would ask that you approve it.
So Stephanie, this has no dollar numbers on it.
Um, the only dollar numbers are the, is the thirty two million that, um, that we are to be allocated from the state of Georgia.
Okay, and that will all go to the airport authority?
It will all go to the airport authority, yes, ma'am.
I hope they invest some while they waiting on it.
This is, this is really caught me off guard. I was not prepared that they were gonna do this, and if I had been their financial person, I would not have suggested to do it. This is, just makes it easier for them. But, uh, in case of emergency, they have given the money away, so I'm all into, when can I sign this? Let's get this done.
Yes, because we've never gotten money in, up front for the airport, ever.
Correct. Alright. Next on the agenda, Ms. Wyndham, uh, will lead us through a discussion for updating our code of ordinances beginning with division one, laws of local application. Part two, the Board of Commissioners, chapter one, general provisions.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. So, when you're looking at general provisions, um, section two point one, the board and established districts, you're not gonna see a whole lot of, of changes that need to be made to that. Um, I will be, we, we're updating some antiquated language, but I will also be cleaning these, um, these up as we come to them, to remove some of these dates that just don't make sense to be there anymore, because there, we're talking about things that happened at a certain date and will be good through another certain date, and all of those dates have passed. So, um, that historical information is, is just not necessarily appropriate. In some situations it is, but when you're talking about, um, the board and its established districts, um, we know what our districts are as of January one, twenty twenty five, and that's what they, they all are for all of you. So, I, I don't think we need to talk about twenty twenty or twenty twenty two anymore.
There's a big issue in here about compensation.
Um, yes, sir.
A big issue about, uh, with the schools.
Um, they're.
Or convicts or whatever.
I'm, I'm wanna under, before you go down to that point, I'm gonna understand, has it always been that you have to be a resident for two years? has it always been that you have to be a resident for two years before you can run for elected office?
It has been for many, many years, I don't know if that, I can't answer the question as to always, but I.
Well, how do they know?
Um, you sign, you're signing an affidavit when you qualify.
You just sign and you lie about it if you, if you want to. Because I'm, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out because I'm.
Well, I, I would not encourage anyone to lie about it simply because, um, your opponent is going to, to, um, prove that you have lied about it if that is.
No, everybody don't do that, but I just wanted, because I was like, I thought it was one year, okay, Clay, go ahead.
No, uh, for, for solstices.
This is all, this is a lot of still work to do for, uh, I think, minor stuff. A lot of it, how to re, to pick somebody, so we don't go through what we went through with Don, is in here as I saw it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so that we, the, the parties give it to us and all that stuff.
And, and it, it was that way before, it's just, um, when, when you're in the situation that we were in with Commissioner Hall, former Commissioner Hallbaker, um, you are innocent until proven guilty and he was in jail during COVID. So there, that situation could not have been handled really any differently than the way that it was, unfortunately.
Okay.
Um, the, there are lots of sections that you see in here that are reserved with editor's notes. Those sections need to be removed, um, there's no reason for us to reserve them. If, if we're going to have, um, uh, it, it, I would suggest that we have an appendix that just, um, references prior ordinances with historical significance, but not include things that are, um, reserved when we're never going to go back in and, and fill those with anything. And the editor's notes are just confusing.
All right, so compensation, we got to redo altogether.
Um, I, I, I believe based on discussions that you've had, that that is something that you definitely want to, um, to consider looking at again. Um, the numbers, of course, are a- as of July, the, uh, July the first of two thousand and those numbers are, are different, we can actually.
Two thousand?
Yes.
That's correct, I believe that was the last time that the board had any adjustments to their pay.
Twen- twenty five years ago.
Yes, ma'am. And the only adjustments that have been made since then have been those that have been granted by the legislature and the governor over the, over those two and a half decades.
Section two dash one, we have to redo, update and all that stuff.
Two, two, the two point eleven is compensation, yes, sir.
Yes, excuse me. Uh, and then, uh, two point sixteen?
Um, two point sixteen may require additional conversation based on, um, the correctional institute, but at the very least, we need to change the terminology of convicts and chain gangs.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, and then something about going on a chain gang, I saw that in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yeah, this is a, um, a good start point, but it, there's needs to be some more work, I believe, in, in this thing, uh, but it.
Well, I, um, the only one that I really need further direct, direction on is the compensation provision. And that, um, I mean, everything else can be moved to it, things that need to be moved to a historical table, we can do that.
We'll probably talk through that tonight and figure out what, what that's going to say. We'll, uh, this, that part may have to wait till after the second reading to be done with it, but we'll have an answer, uh, this month on what that looks like.
I, I can have this ready for a, a first reading, um, at our next meeting if.
We could have it, uh, my, my recommendation would be, the first reading would be the first meeting in June.
In June, okay.
Oh, yeah, this is May, yeah, the first, yes, May, yeah, June, because then we'll have the, the budget will be done and that money is all done inside of it. All right. Uh, uh, any other comments on, on that? All right, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. We're adjourned. Uh, next meeting starts in forty five minutes.
Correct.